Good evening. Planning and zoning commission, you can join the meeting in person at 5555 perimeter drive and also access the live stream via the city's website. We welcome public participation, including public comments. Thank you for being here this evening. At this time, if you'll please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Beal, I'll turn the time over to you for our roll call.
Mr. Snare.
Here.
Mr. Fishman.
Here.
Ms. Call.
Here.
Mr. Supalak.
Here.
Ms. Harder.
Here.
Mr. Way.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. We have quite a few, three meetings minutes to accept into the record this evening and tonight's documents. Do I have a motion to accept the documents into the record and to approve the meeting minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Supalak. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Way.
Yes.
Ms. Harder.
Yes.
Mr. Supalak.
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Mr. Fishman.
Yes.
Mr. Snare.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. The planning and zoning commission is an advisory board to city council and makes recommendations on matters of rezoning and plotting of property. In other cases, the commission has the final decision-making responsibility. Anyone who intends to address the commission on any of these administrative cases must be sworn in. There are no cases eligible for the consent agenda this evening. The agenda order is typically determined at the beginning of the meeting by the chair. Tonight, we will proceed according to the agenda order. The rules and regulations of the commission state that no new agenda items are to be introduced after 10:30 p.m. The meeting procedure for reviewing cases this evening will begin with a staff presentation, followed by an opportunity for the applicant to make any presentation. The commission will have the opportunity to ask any clarifying questions of staff and the applicant. Those occasionally are separated or combined at the discretion of the chair. The commission will then hear any public comment. We ask that all public comment be provided at the podium, and each speaker provide their name and address for the record. Please press the button on the microphone until the green light appears on the microphone prior to speaking. Following public comment, the commission will enter into a deliberation period on the case prior to rendering a decision. Anyone intending to address the commission this evening on any of the admini-
Sorry, there are no administrative cases on the agenda, so no need to swear anyone in.
No need to swear in. Wonderful. Thank you. All right, we are looking at case number one, neighborhood design standards, standards 22-177 ADM, Administrative Request Code Amendment. This application is a request for a review and recommendation to city council for the new neighborhood design guidelines for residential planned unit developments to accompany the code amendment. Ms. Holt, you have our case presentation this evening. I will turn the time over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Call, and good evening, commissioners. We are presenting both the guidelines and the code amendments together tonight since they are so closely linked, and we will be asking for a recommendation of approval for each of them. I'm going to go through the history part of it fairly quickly since we talked about that in great detail in December, and then I'm going to provide some graphic updates for your information, and then we'll look at the code amendments in some detail because we haven't really seen those before, although we've talked about them conceptually. And I'm going to ask you to follow along with the memo, the revised memo that you have at your desks with the updated page numbers in the table. All other information is exactly the same as in the previous memo. So with that, we will very quickly go through the history, and we'll start with the problem statement. We have PUD intent language in the code that talks about various aspirational ideas, and these are shown here and were presented in December. And we know that this commission and council wanted to establish specific and better expectations for residential PUDs, so that is the need statement. Staff held workshops with the commissioners and city council liaisons a year ago in January of '22, and the resultant goals are listed here. We also went over those in December. This project has been carefully developed over many months using that input from January plus other feedback along the way, and Dan Philibom of Land Plan Studios is here tonight. He has been assisting us in putting together this really exciting document that we're going to share with you tonight. We're now at the adoption phase, and this is scheduled for city council on February 13th. You'll remember from December, some of the organizational elements that the guidelines adhere to, and very briefly, I'll just remind you of these. The public realm macro is the blue text, and that is project-wide and the broadest scope, and has to do with the open spaces and organizing framework for any neighborhood. This approach ensures that preservation of natural features happens, and the framework determines the relationship between the open spaces and the entire neighborhood. And this repeats much of that intent language that is already in the code for PUDs, so you can see how that connection is being made. Moving on to the public realm micro, which is in green, this area looks as streets, as public spaces, and this is how a community is experienced when you're either walking, driving, or biking through it. Within this section, we talk about how garage doors are mitigated, and we also talk about the diversity of architectural design and materials. The private realm, in yellow, is our most fine-grained area, and this focuses on individual lots in two different ways. The first is to look at unique lot and product arrangements that create interesting neighborhoods block by block, and then the second is to look at individual lots and buildable area setbacks, private open space. Looking at our latest updates, this is based on commissioner feedback in December, and again, follow along in your revised memo. You'll see in the table, we have the first column, which encaps or encompasses all of your comments received at the meeting and after the meeting, and then the second column is the resolution that we came up with and where in the document that resolution can be found. And then, as promised, I'm going to go through some of the highlights of the most discussed items from December, just to give you a little bit of an in-depth look at what we did with them. There was some discussion as to what counts as open space and what is analyzed. So on page 13, we added language to address this, and honestly, it's one of those things that you know it when you see it, and it depends on the complexity and the location of each individual site. The individual characteristics of the site will play that primary role in determining what we're going to be looking at. So staff will work with the applicant to discern what those items are, and then we will bring that information forward to the commission, and you can agree with it or ask for more, or we go from there. Regarding stormwater features, that was another topic of big discussion. We provided additional language on page 21, including the possibility of grass swales, dry facilities, and then this is also noted in the code amendments that we're going to talk about very shortly. Looking at some more graphic solutions, houses fronting onto open space are shown both photographically and sketch-wise on page 42, and then some specific language about the distance to the front door from a public street is included on page 41. And then finally, the discussion about the location of air conditioning units on narrow lots, those were included and talked about as item K on page 39, as shown in the graphic on the slide. We're also in the midst of making some graphics adjustments, so I wanted to call these to your attention. These are not in your guidelines tonight, but they're being worked on, so when this gets to city council, you may see these, and we don't want you to be alarmed. For the open space framework plan example, we are going to omit the aerial photo information from the background. This allows better clarity to illustrate the points that are being made. The fundamental information will not change, and it would look like this before and after example. So moving into the anticipated code amendments, in December, we discussed these anticipated amendments, and these were necessary to ensure that the code-related requirements matched the new guidelines and vice versa. In this process, we also added other, I'll call them administrative linkages, where it was necessary to ensure that the guidelines and the code are all legally connected. For example, the intent and the application sections that we have reference to the neighborhood design guidelines. And many thanks to Mr. Boggs for helping us with that and making sure that we didn't omit anything and that we got everything in the right places. So I'm going to be pointing out the differences as we go through and present these in the same order as you have in your draft code language, the one with the red lines that was in your packet, so please feel free to follow along. We're going to start with code amendment 152002. This is an administrative amendment in the introductory section for PUDs. This section talks about the overarching purpose of the PUD, so we added text to encourage variety of development per the neighborhood design guidelines. We also specified that this applies to residential PUDs, and we corrected some Scrivener's errors. Is everybody following along? It's, I know it's a lot of information. Everybody good? Okay. Section 152.086 was an anticipated amendment, as we discussed in December, and this is the open space requirements for projects in general. This includes the required open space dedication, that minimum dedication that we expect with every project, and now we reference how the open space location and quality are referenced in the neighborhood design guidelines, so we're folding these two ideas together. Section 153.050A is an administrative amendment. This section talks about the purpose of a PUD, and it talks about the expected character and land uses, and how the standard regulations don't address these expectations. So we emphasize the neighborhood design guidelines to ensure that the desired higher standards are met, and again, we took the opportunity to address some Scrivener's errors. Section 153.152 was an anticipated amendment, and this has to do with quality and types of open space specifically in PUDs. We added two new sections here, one for stormwater and one for easements and setbacks. So in the first subsection, the stormwater features won't count as open space unless they have superior and interactive qualities per the neighborhood design guidelines. And note that we're using the word "features" instead of "stormwater ponds," and this allows for greater flexibility for the wet ponds, dry ponds, wetlands, any other option that someone might want to suggest.
Specify the features required?
No, because it is up to each particular site and particular concept that-
Or the types of-
-the developer is wanting to propose.
My worry when I went through this is that you're allowing water to be open space now, so am I correct about that?
When, and this, the qualifier is a huge part of this, Mr. Fishman, it's when the superior and interactive ideals of the guidelines are being met.
I understand that, but that's kind of an open door, and you could put a dock there, and you can say, now it's interactive, and I, when I went through, I worried about that because many developers, that's what they want to do. They want to cut down the open space, and one of the things that Jane Fox talked about a lot, and I've talked about a lot, is we want these open spaces to be usable, productive, open spaces, and I just think we're opening a huge door there. I'm sorry to interrupt, but it worried me when I read it, that I can just see some of our developers putting a dock there or a fountain or something and say, now it's interactive, and counting it, and that's a giant, you could make it, take away a lot of green with water.
So, Ms. Holt, can you speak to, this is the PUD draft language, if someone wanted to utilize this draft language, what would that process look like from inception, hey, I want to build a PUD development within the city of Dublin, to it coming before? Who would look at that?
So staff would look at that, and specifically for things like stormwater, staff not only includes planning, but also engineering, and we would look at that and see, in our professional opinion, does it meet the criteria established in the guidelines? Then we would make a recommendation to this body, either yes it does, no it doesn't. Then this body has the opportunity to say, we don't agree, or we do agree. We don't, one of the main goals of this entire project from its inception was to ensure that we do not preclude excellent design by being too terribly prescriptive. So that's, we're trying to walk this very careful line.
And correct me if I speak out of turn, but the whole nature of a PUD is for that give and take, for the non-prescriptive, you know, you want to come in and you want to build according to the land development, the building development code? You can do that. You can pull up format, you can go through all of the three-step, two-step, whatever the process is for your particular project, but a PUD is that higher level of-
I love-
-give and take, and so we are no less charged with implementing good planning processes and the vision of the code today than we were yesterday. This is a little bit more detail to applicants to tell them what we're expecting.
I understand that, and this is a wonderful board here now, but we're not going to be on here forever.
Of course.
And I've been on with some very liberal people who easily talked into concessions, and I think if this was this board, I'd be real confident, but this is going to be for a long time. I love PUDs, and I would like to tighten them up rather than make them looser, and I just think that it's real important in Dublin to have interactive land and use it all wisely. I think that there's pressure in our culture now to get higher density, more people per acre, and so on, and that's fine if it's done perfectly, and so that worries me. Okay, I, you, there's seven of us here, so you can-
Yeah.
But I think that, that I think down the road, I think they're saying, well, you're creating hardship. We spent $150,000 to design this dock that comes out there, and, you know, and so on. So it happened in Mirfield, by the way, in 1973 or '76, I was around here. I hate to admit that, but I was, and the developer wanted to make that, instead of having the second golf course, they wanted to make a pond, okay, and that was going to be all water, and a lot cheaper than building a golf course and all that, and so we said, it's a PUD. No, you got to, it's got to be so many units per acre, and acre means land, you know, so anyway, that's just my opinion, and there's seven of us, I understand, but that, when I went through this, this morning, I got, I got worried because I think PUDs need to be tight, okay, and they need to, we know, that's what the wonderful thing about PUDs. Once the developer agrees to go PUD, he's got a great luxury of banging it through, okay, but we have the luxury of setting a PUD that assures us that we're going to get what we want, you know, so anyway, that's my thing.
We'll address that further in the discussion portion.
Great.
So are we thinking about that, or what?
Yes, we haven't even gotten to the deliberation period, so yes, we're taking that, and we'll dig into it greater. Ms. Holt?
Thank you. So sections 153.054A, B, and C are administrative amendments involving the actual PUD processing steps. So here, we're including the neighborhood design guidelines as an integral part of each process step. Section, subsection A is for concept plan, B for preliminary, C for final. 153.0714E was an anticipated amendment, and this section has to do with general development standards, where previously, there was a cap of 45% lot coverage for PUDs. We are now suggesting language that allows an opportunity for greater lot coverage percentages when the neighborhood design guidelines are followed. And this allows us to contemplate residential projects that maybe we haven't seen in Dublin yet, something different and new, and this particular section again speaks directly to the goal to not limit creativity, to not box ourselves in. And again, we address some Scrivener's errors. 153.134A1, now A through now G are anticipated amendments from December, and these have to do with the street tree requirements. We added an opportunity to change spacing requirements for columnar trees with approval of city forestry, and we added a section that street trees of varying sizes may be used to emphasize neighborhoods, intersections, pedestrian locations, other focal points, again, using the neighborhood design guidelines. And finally, section 153.190A is-
Can you go back for a second? Is, am I missing something? Is there, is there a G?
There is a G now in the suggested language. Yes, we added that about emphasizing the different focal points within a neighborhood. Yes. It's all quite complicated.
So we do have multiple copies, and the name of them doesn't match the name that you originally referenced, so the file name in our shared drive is C1 and C2 underscore proposedcode.pdf. So that's the one that contains the G with the red lines.
I saw it on the clean code.
Yeah.
The clean one is the one with the code completely new and pristine, as if everything were accepted tonight.
Okay.
It's just easier to follow with the red line one. I was on the clean one and heard it.
Yes, the red line one is the one to follow along with. All right, and would it help to go back over anything? Are we good? Okay, all right. Finally, section 153190A is an administrative amendment. This is under the residential appearance code, and we'll recall that this section has been previously used as kind of a baseline for our residential PUDs, which is exactly what we want to get away from. So we noted that PUDs are specifically required to use the neighborhood design guidelines, and then emphasize that the residential appearance codes are for the standard zoning. So planning is requesting recommendation?
Excuse me, Ms. Holt.
Appearance only, what is-
Oh, it's, it's the code amendment. It's really just saying, hey, refer back to the code. This neighborhood standard is what we're looking at.
Okay. So for our recommendations tonight, we're requesting a recommendation of approval for both the guidelines and the zoning code amendments, and with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Holt. All right, so questions first. I do want to address Mr. Fishman's, and I'm going to call it a question at first because, looking at the code, really, one of the things that was the consensus among the commission is the PUD does give us opportunity to implement the vision that city council has challenged for the city of Dublin into future PUD projects. And so understanding that that is the requirement, and understanding that essentially, we're looking at adding some more definitions, some more language into the code to help applicants as they're coming forward to know what we're looking for. We did add those two requirements. The first one is stormwater features, and I think that's one of the concerns. So stormwater features in today's language, prior to these code amendments, isn't really addressed, and the coupling of a stormwater feature with a recreational or an amenity, so to speak, isn't really addressed. Correct. With this language, can you help clarify the intent of staff in specifically item 153052B subsection six? So essentially, I want to clarify, we're really talking about the qualification of these for open space.
When we were talking about how stormwater features could be used within a neighborhood, you know, we all think of stormwater features as maybe pond, fountain, trail around it, you're good to go. And Mr. Way brought up in December, the opportunity to use a dry feature as perhaps a playing field or some other kind of passive recreational area. Then we started thinking about, well, new stormwater features can include wetlands, constructed wetlands. There are some other things. I am not a stormwater engineer, so I am not going to go down that road in too much detail, but we really started thinking about how each individual site could dictate what kind of stormwater feature it might have. For example, and I hope I'm going to answer your question eventually.
Could I offer three examples, and have you talked to those specific examples?
Yeah.
Metro Park Highland Croy with its water area.
Mm-hmm.
The non-wet basin, the trail, let's see, what trail is that? It is coming up from the north pool. If you head south on the trail, right by the little, yeah, so that one, essentially, it's stormwater, and that's it. Has a culvert on one side, culvert on the other side, and that's it.
Yeah.
That's number two, dry basin. Number three is the depression at the north pool, on the north side of the north pool, that's landscaped, that it's beautified. Can you, can you speak to essentially what staff's vision is, given those three examples?
Sure. So the first one at the south end of Glacier Ridge Park is all about wildlife, and it has the trails, it has the boardwalk, it has a viewing station. I'm very familiar with that one, and that, in staff's mind, would add an awful lot of benefit to a neighborhood, especially to preserve or conserve an existing wetland, and that- And that integrates seamlessly into perhaps a residential neighborhood.
So to summarize on that one, yes, it could be qualified as open space.
Yes. Yep, because there's a bigger purpose than just stormwater.
Correct. Number two.
A dry basin where maybe there's just an inlet, an outlet, no. So you would need to do more than that. More than that. We want to see these integrated into an overall open space. Now, I could see where to get to Mr. Way's point. It's possible that a dry basin could be a bigger part of a series of athletic fields or be connected to, you know, topographically to a playground and some other features. I'm still on the fence about that. And we would have to look at the details of it.
But again, it would be within the PUD application. It would be, it would come before staff, it would come before the commission, and we would evaluate it given the context of its entirety.
Exactly. And we would evaluate it on its merit according to the open space framework plan.
Mr. Way.
So I'm assuming that that example actually wasn't designed as an open space. It's just, it is a performative space, but people are using it for recreation. But with this, you know, proposal, people could do that, but they have to do more than just create the basin, right? I, I agree with that totally.
Yes.
So if we could go on to example number three.
The final example you mentioned has some trees and some paths.
Uh, it, it has some kind of mid-hard scape. It's rock, it's a depression, it's a dry basin, but it's beautified. It's landscaped, but there is no recreational component unless you wanted to go twist an ankle walking along the bottom of the.
So that one sounds like something that we would have a very hard look at. And we would want to see again, how does it integrate into the open space framework of the entire site? Does it link up to other open spaces on adjoining properties? Does it have something more than just something nice to look at?
So does that somewhat meet? I mean, that's three examples that have taken place.
I'm still nervous. I'm still nervous because first of all, I, I never disagreed with him and, and, and I, I think that he's right about that, that you can use dry basins as recreational things and so on. But I think, remember, we're not all going to be here. And I, I, I always think about that. And I, and, and if you drive around Columbus and see dry basins, they're terrible. They're terrible. And they, and, and they're filled with honeysuckle, they're, they're terrible. And, and so they require more maintenance than water, okay? And, and, and you're not going to straddle HOA with that, so it's going to be the city doing it probably. And, and they're going to want the city to do it. And, and I, I think if it's integrated, as you say, like a rec area and something, I, I had no problem with that counting because then it's a, it's, it's a dry basin, but it's also part of the open space because it's a recreational area. And that was your, the way you said it, and I was pretty enthused about that. But, but I, I think it's really a sketchy thing and I think we're going to have to really fine tune it so that, that we don't lose open space. Because remember, I, I think everybody made it clear that we want the areas to be usable, the green space to be something that if we're going to get more density and, and, and just because you have a, something that we put some gravel in and say, oh, kids can play in that, that's not a recreational space. So I, I just think that some of those are hard to enforce. And, and I, I can just see developers saying, this is a hardship. We told, we, we spent this money, we're going to put gravel in, we're going to have it, kids can ride their skateboards there, whatever. So, so I, I, I think that we're, I, I like to see, I love PUDs and I think I'd like to see them tighter, not looser. But I, but, but I, and I think Tim's ideas are, are, is a great idea. Rather than just a body of water, if it was some real recreational area, something that really is part of the landscape, then we could consider it open space, you know? But, but if it's, if it's a ravine and, and, and they've got, they said, oh yeah, we put some rock there, the kids can, whatever. And I think that could happen. So, and they'll, and, and I think we're just making more fights for ourselves.
So if, if we could rewind, so we, we do want to make sure that we allow public comment prior to our official deliberation. So if we could proceed on with comments, of course, if there are remaining comments on the open space qualification, we'll stay here for a minute. But if we could continue on with comments, make sure that we get those addressed and then we'll invite the public to participate with comments. So looking to the commission, are there questions that we have for applicant, sorry, not for the applicant, for staff on this administrative request?
Okay, the, the appearance code, I didn't quite understand that in the PUD. So you're saying they can do what they want just so it still follows the, the code now?
No. So we are adding two additional restriction, well, two addition, additional items to the code. One of those is just because you put in a dry basin or a wet basin and call it open space, doesn't mean that we have to accept it as open space.
No, I'm off that now.
Okay.
I'm off the appearance, I read here about appearance code.
PUDs have to perform better than the standard code. And the better is?
The neighborhood standard.
Design guideline.
Okay, great. Okay, that's, I just missed, I just wanted to make sure of that. That's what I thought. We're not making it looser, we're making it harder.
And I would clarify, we're not, this is, I'll allow you to speak.
Excuse me, sorry. I went a long time without speaking, so I had to clear my throat. One thing that I would note is that if you look at the original language and the purpose sections of the residential appearance standards that are in the packet, a lot of that that is stricken through reflects that the original intention of those residential appearance standards was to be applicable to standard zoning. And they anticipated the adoption of something just like this document to apply to plan unit development as, as guidelines for developers to bring in front of you.
All right, looking back to the commission for questions. Ms. Harder.
The only question I have too is like when we're talking about retention ponds or dry basins and so forth, are there questions about the cost to the homeowners associations? I understand they have to handle on their own, but we have seen people going back to the city to say, hey, can you help us out with these, you know, mowing or something of that sort? Is, is that anything? Because I see this in the future that the body that's up here is going to have to think about those things.
If, if we could let Mr. Boggs address the.
Yeah, yeah, that, that is a, a good question and similar to what this body encounters with regard to private streets. So ultimately it is something from a practical perspective that is addressed in the plating process. And so this body gets the preliminary plat in front of it that would set out those maintenance Cost isn't necessarily, cost to the city isn't necessarily a criteria for this body's consideration, but ultimately would be considered by city council in adopting a final plat because that is the sort of property transaction with the city that occurs.
Can you clarify also the cost to the applicant, the cost of implementing the items that we call out in code?
Right, yeah, that, that too is not in this commission's purview, but in the plating process, cost to the city would be certainly a consideration of city council.
Thank you, Mr. Boggs. Other questions? I just have one. The sidewalks. And I think maybe we used a, a wrong vernacular when we were addressing what we were thinking for undulating, for meandering paths, trails. I think there is an argument that could be made for meandering whatever label you want to put on that. And I think that's what, at least that's what this part of the commission was going after the last time we discussed. Now, there was a comment in there that was not supported by T and M, transit mobility?
Transportation and mobility.
Okay.
Yes, I did do some investigation on that. Shared use paths certainly are encouraged to wander and, and take the scenic route. On the other hand, sidewalks are direct, you know, fastest routes to the destination. So the, the point was that sidewalks are, are doing a different thing. People want to get somewhere quickly and easily versus the shared use path.
Now, do we have any standards for, so for instance, if we're adjacent to an arterial, but we have a hundred foot setback, so to speak, and therefore a lot of, I'm thinking Highland Croy or near Field or any of those wider berths? Now, you could argue using the sidewalk versus shared use path, that you really want to get somewhere, you want to go to Giant Eagle, you want to. But, but really I see those wider berths as having more opportunity. Is there a standard for shared use paths, go in X position adjacent to Y kind of street and connect point A to point B? Sidewalks are adjacent to minor arterials or, or neighborhood streets. Is there any definition calculation standard that's employed by the, by the city when plotting out what is called what?
I bet there is.
Okay. Understood. All right. Mr. Way, did you have a question?
Yeah, a couple of points or clarifications. So, and this is the guidelines I'm talking to right now. So page 30, architectural composition, diversity and materials. The architectural design of residential buildings should have a timeless quality that is based on vernacular forms and clad with exterior materials common to central Ohio. Can I build a contemporary building in Dublin under those, under that definition? A modern contemporary building?
I think that you could.
Page 30 for those of us following along.
It's the second bullet down.
I'm just trying to, I'm processing that in my head, like, does that?
I don't think that that precludes something modern at all. We're talking about generally speaking, it should have this feeling. Again, we're not wanting to preclude something really new and exciting and unique for the city. So we're, we're being very careful to use should, may, those kinds of words.
So there's a lot of flexibility in there.
There's a lot of flexibility in here. It is more about the quality of the materials and maybe the forms rather than, you know, we're not precluding.
Like everything has to have a pip roof and, you know, maybe not?
Right.
Right.
Yeah, we do not want to do that.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you for clarifying. And then one other thing that, that hit me about the front facing garages. We don't specifically say you, you can't do them, right? We're not saying you can't.
Correct.
And, but is there a way to avoid that every house in a, in the PUD has a front facing garage, but it's setback 20 feet? Is there a way to limit the amount of front facing garages or?
That's.
Vantage, like, I don't know.
Yeah, and that's one of the things that we were getting at with, in the private realm and the lot layouts. And we've asked for block by block layouts of how a neighborhood might appear. And that is one of the things that we're wanting to get at is where are, where's the diversity in garage locations? Where, you know, what does that streetscape really look like?
Right. But the, this doesn't really say you can't do it, you can't just line up houses and they have garages, but they have, but we are saying that'd be 20 feet back from the front of the, right? So that's a.
That is correct.
Step in the right direction.
That is correct.
But there's still garages lining the street. And I think, you know, I think the intent of this was to really encourage more side or rear facing garages, right? Or maybe not, maybe that's just giving the options.
For the larger lots, like the manor lots, we really do emphasize that side.
Yeah.
And maybe the, the entry courtyard, port couchers, that, that sort of thing when you're talking about the narrow lots, it's very hard to.
Unless you, unless you flip it and put the garage in the back, right?
Unless you do that.
Yeah. Okay, I'm, I understand.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to, as, if, if these get approved, you know, and things come at us, you know, what we, what we can.
Right.
Use as our tool to approve or deny things.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Other questions from the commission?
Yeah, I'll wait.
Okay. All right. With that, I'd like to offer opportunity for anyone from the public to come up and make comment on the application. If anyone is here and would like to make comment, you're welcome to do so. Did we receive any public comment via the live stream?
We have not, and I'll double check my phone. Nope, nope, we have not.
Going once, going twice. All right, thank you. We will continue on into deliberation and I do want to take this a little bit kind of in sequence. So we're going to go back to that red line document, the draft code adminis, amendment language. There were a couple of items that came up for some specific discussion and a couple of them kind of crossed over. So for instance, the, I don't think anyone had an issue with 152.002, skipping down to the 152.086. The location and quality of open space is addressed in the neighborhood design guidelines. Essentially, we're just referencing the new document. Same with 050A. Now we get down to the one that was subject to quite a bit of discussion, 153.052, and then the stormwater features. So we did talk about this quite a bit. Mr. Way, if I can have you kind of kick off discussion on this item and then we'll ask for essentially consensus or deviations from the rest of the commission? That's acceptable to the commission?
I, I think I am fine with the language in here. I'm going back to the, the interactive, whoops, sorry.
Where are we?
The interactive part of it, I think is, to me, that, that's the key word in the whole thing, that it's got to be interactive. And the interpretation I have of that is it's, it's interactive with the, the population or the people that are there. So I think, I think that is a, is a great addition to the language and I think that gives a lot of flexibility.
Oh, he's got it.
With how we handle those facilities, so.
The only call out I want to add to that is understanding, you know, we, we can't ensure who's going to be in these seats in four years, 40 years. But we want to make sure that we have the proper vision drafted and part of that vision is imagery. And so we've done quite a good job in the neighborhood design guidelines. And so I'd like to encourage staff to, when possible, just like you've done for the housing, for the everything else, specifically with stormwater features and with unbuildable easements, image of not acceptable, would not qualify as open space, kind of like we did today with the ABC test. So, Mr. Fishman, what that would do is that would allow a developer to look at something and say, okay, if I'm going to do a dry basin with no addition, does not count as open space. This one with a meandering path, a gazebo, some barbecues, some benches and a volleyball court, yes, could count as open space. And examples in the neighborhood standards so that the next commission and the commission after that, et cetera, sees what the vision is in pictures.
Hey, I, I, I understand that and I appreciate that. In, in a dry basin like was suggested, I think that's fabulous, but you know, on a wet basin, they're prescribed by the engineer how big the thing has to be and so on. And if, if they say, well, we'd like to count that as, as, as open space because we're going to put a path around it, a dock going in, I don't think that should count. So how do we cover ourselves? In other words, they're using green space to put a dock to the water and then now they're counting the water. And it's happened before. I mean, I've been on cases where they say, we should be able to count that because it's, we're putting a fountain in, it's going to be, people are going to have picnics around it and so on. And so I, I think we need to just tighten that up a little bit so that, that I think the drive, when it's a dry basin and it becomes a useful piece of property, I think that's great, you know?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm giggling over here because I'm seeing the discussion of the application coming forward with the dock saying, okay, well, we want to qualify this as open space because we have a dock and us going out and measuring the eight foot by 48 foot and saying, okay, this is how much open space because that's the interactive portion.
Yeah.
So giggling to myself.
Anyway, I, I, I think we like to keep it as simple as possible. We can always give somebody a, a variance or. We can always give somebody a, a variance or, you know, and say, okay, but if they know they've got to do it this way, then we're giving them a favor. When they say, well, wait a second, I'm reading the code here and it says. So I.
Yeah, I agree, and I, I'm comfortable with number six because it says it shall not count unless. So that, that's essentially saying, okay, this is going from a shall to a, we're going to give a little bit so long as you meet. But number seven says a may. May count toward. And I almost wish we'd do the same, shall not count unless, because it's the same, it has to be integrated into the overall open space, et cetera, et cetera. So, Mr. Fishman essentially going a little bit more strict in saying, okay, shall not, shall not unless.
Okay, but, but. Superior is a kind of a arbitrary.
The one call out that Mr. Way had was the interactive design has to be an interactive design. So you can't just put.
With, with the water, or, or if it's a dry space, interactive in the dry space.
And with the overall development.
The square footage that, that, that they're getting, okay, or the acreage they're getting, it has to be used. You could, not, not something around it or to it or in it or whatever.
Can I, can I ask a separate question? And, and I'm, I'm sort of inferring fundamentally, you're on board with, right? If they create an interactive space, whatever it is.
Right.
We can count it, right? It can, it can count as, as.
I think the wording has to be.
Right, well, and so I think all we're doing is we're refining how, or we're, we're finding the language is what it comes down to. So you're already refining the language that basically articulates closer to, it would be a variance, right? It's not, not approved, not acceptable unless X, Y and Z. And even supplementing the, supplementing the design guides with, you even said it relative to, this would not be acceptable, this would not be acceptable. And you rattled off, I don't know, volleyball courts and other things, and you said this could.
Maybe.
Right, you didn't even say this is, so it starts to present that the interpretation is on our side and clear definition of what is not acceptable.
Correct, and I do want to clarify, I want to make sure that we're all thinking the same. This is the neighborhood standards. When they, they bring forward a PUD, that is the guiding document. This document helps them write that.
Shapes that.
Helps them draft and, and create the vision of that. And then the city works with them to accept that or to not. These are the, essentially this is the rough draft and hey, you can create your vision using this as a reference document.
We may be a little premature on a straw vote, but I'm in favor of the language here because I think it walks the, the appropriate line. I'm, I'm not big on vague and subjectivity, but that's why I think this accomplishes the amount of specificity that we want.
Yeah, can, can you clarify?
Well, but it's not, I mean, it's, you. It is, it's a compromise. I mean, otherwise you're saying you cannot do this.
Mr. Schneer.
You can do it.
Which, just help us connect for the record, what, which are you referencing right now?
Are you referencing six or seven, the language of six, the language of seven or both?
I think Warren is talking about six and seven together.
Right.
So one being a shall not versus one being a may?
So.
It would be your position that, well, would, would you want to prohibit any of, any of the conduct that's.
No.
Called out here unless it's by variance?
You said the two key words, so vagueness and subject.
No, I, I, right, I'm not in, well, I'm not in favor of vagueness or subjectivity, and I don't think that these are vague or overly subjective. Because to, to, otherwise it'd be overly prescriptive, I think. I guess, no, I, I think, I, I agree with you. I think that's good. If we could spell out some way in this that the, the, the actual space has to be used to, for recreational or whatever, it has to be used, okay? In other words. Well, it has. My worry is, we, we had a case years ago that, that over near perimeter where they had this, in fact, I called it a weener, it made the papers, you know, but, but it was just a, this thing going through, and they wanted to count that as a common space because they said, oh, if people going shopping and they're going to see this thing and they're going to walk around it, we're, we're going to put gravel around it and all that stuff. And, and all they were doing is sucking up a little bit of green we had. And that's, and, and, and so if, if the space is used and it welcomes people and, and, and use the, the acre or whatever we're giving up, or five acres or 10 acres, if they're walking through it, if they're, you know, whatever, then I think it's, it's really common.
In that example, would you, would, in your mind's eye, because we haven't seen it, but in your mind's eye, would, do you think that would qualify as a superior, would have qualified as a superior interactive design? The one you were just talking about?
Developer said it did, and, and some people on the board agreed that it did, okay? And, and, and it, it, it barely failed, okay? And, and so as, to count is, is open space because you said.
So I think, Mr. Schneer, I think we will go back to, and, and Mr. Fishman, you know, we appreciate you have the most experience on the planning and zoning commission than, than anyone here, and we understand. But I think that what we're looking at, especially with the, the, these are standards, right? These are neighborhood design standards, and they're not supposed to be all encompassing. And the purpose of the PUD is to provide guidelines, but not be prescriptive. And because the design is to not be prescriptive, the language is generalized like superior interactive design. We know that that calls into question future commissions, and I hope that the city council is at least as diligent in choosing commission members in the future. I'm comfortable also with the language, and it sounds like we do have consensus among the language.
Okay.
So would you be comfortable keeping the language?
Well, sure, I, I'm fine if, 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 if.
I think I can count, I, I think I counted four.
I think you know where my head's coming from, though. I just, yeah, your, your concerns are well founded.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Agreed.
And if I, if I may, just to possibly put Mr. Fishman's mind or, or other minds somewhat more at ease. I mean, right now there is no guiding language, so any debate over whether a, you know, a, a stormwater basin should count as open space or not as open spaces, really, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot for the city to fall back on. And in many cases, that's okay, because all of this, we're talking about legislative decisions, that legislative decide, legislative side of your duties. And so as long as we're not being completely arbitrary and capricious, the, the city's decision should stand. By adopting guidelines, and I, I would feel good about defending the guidelines as written, there's at least that extra layer of saying the burden is on you developer to show the commission that this particular stormwater feature has that superior interactive design. So this is, this really, in, in my view, does provide more guidance to applicants who are willing to accept that gentle guidance and provides, you know, a framework for the commission to have its, its discussion in. And ultimately to help, you know, in that interactive process with the developer, get to the PUD text, which is going to be the governing document, and the plat, which is going to be the governing document.
I appreciate.
Thank you, Mr. Boggs.
I appreciate.
All right, the, the next few items are essentially just references back to the Neighborhood Design Guidelines. I don't think anyone has concern with those. Lot coverage, so we added the lot coverage and setback requirements for residential development should follow the design principles. That's the 45% one. Spacing adjust, the, these are the columnar trees, again, subject to, so we're allowing, but subject to the proper body, which in this case is City Forestry Division. And then the variety of trees. Any conversation on the variety of trees? I know there was some discussion last time. I have one that I just want to make sure that we're all thinking the same, but any?
I hate to be.
I, I have one, so.
I, I was really emotional when I was reading all this stuff this morning. My wife said, calm down.
Poor Bee.
But, but, um, I, don't you think, as I said, I love the PUD because you say, well, this, you follow the PUD, this is what it is. But on lot coverage, I think we're going to have to give more lot coverage in a lot of situations because we're going to want more density and so on. But I, I think we have to put in there somewhere that we're trading something for lot coverage, okay? We have a development, I, I think most of us were on, no, you weren't on, just not that many years ago, where, I think I've told you about it before, you can't put your air conditioner on your property because the, the, they were so close. And so I, I think that we, we would like to put some kind of standards in there that you, that you have to do this and that, and people have to have room for their patio, and, 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 and those are the things that we've given up on a couple of developments. And, 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 and we've approved them, and I've been by, and sure enough, the air conditioner's in the middle of the, the two properties, and they bought, they sold them, so it's fine. But it, I, I, I just think that, that if you're, we're going to eventually give up, we're going to eventually allow more lot coverage. I mean, it's the way it is because we want more density. But I, I think we, there has to be something that says, you're going to give that up, but you're going to do this or that.
Yeah, and, and I think we're covered. So if we look back at the very, very introductions, so the 152.002, that introduction that talks about, you know, purposes of PUDs, you know, combination, but then directly references back to this document. This document, page 7B, says essentially planned unit development regulations are based on the premise that the ultimate quality of the built environment is determined not just by type, character allocation of land uses, but also in a way in which such land uses are arranged and executed. So it essentially says the whole purpose of the PUD is a higher standard.
Right.
And so if that higher standard is incorporating a golf course or two upon, you know, integration, then that's where, again, to Mr. Boggs' point, this guides the PUD document, which then becomes the guiding document for how that.
I understand that.
I.
But there it is, it's kind of a matter of opinion, like having the air conditioners on shared property. They said, that's no, no problem.
Well, and, and the same with the Oak Park, you know, patios where little lots, but easement encroaches.
Put a grill out, you know, so, so I, I, I just think that we could, but word it's so tight.
And I think it goes back to the lot coverages dependent on the design of the lot, for one. Are they doing something unique that allows you, they're going to have more coverage, but they're creating, you know, some kind of smaller open space or something? Or it allows you to build more open space into the overall development because you're clustering the units on tighter lots to preserve open space? So to me, those are the, that's the trade off that we would have.
And I think that's why we've siloed it into the public realm versus the semi-private realm versus the private realm, is to address that, to make sure that we're looking at this to see, okay, at the clustered, at that larger area, yes, we had this amazing park, and it's at the cost of, hey, nobody gets a patio.
Right.
Well, that obviously is going to cause some issues. It's also one of the reasons, reasons why we added the addition that they have to include the build envelope within every lot. That's a requirement in the exhibits.
Right.
And so, but we're, we're setting up future commissions for some things that we didn't have access to, that we kind of kicked ourselves and say, oh, man, we wish we wouldn't have, we wish we would have thought of that. So now they have an exhibit right in front of them that hopefully says, nobody can have public barbecues if we approve this application, to foster that discussion.
That also gives us the opportunity to have that creative dance with the developer where we open the door and have good conversations so that those things aren't happening and kind of we can all move forward.
Thank you.
The mechanical equipment, let's agree on this. The mechanical equipment on shared property is probably a really interesting forensic sort of unpack. I, I almost, because here's the thing, we do this body and by, when it's coming to us, mechanical equipment is not figured out. So that occurred potentially later. Somehow they got down the track with a certain variety of approvals at certain points, and then that probably was scabbed onto the project is what, is what I would, I would guess.
Well.
They, they, we knew going in that there was no way, there was not enough room to put.
On a zero lot line product, you're not.
And I brought up at that time, well, you know, sometimes people are really possessive about the property, and what if somebody's got to work on their air conditioners, hey?
Got it, so they were, they were proposing it here in this, in this forum.
Oh, right up front, right up.
One way or another, it got, it got passed.
Yeah, because one of our members brought up that he lived in a place like that, and he saw no problem with it.
Yeah.
Again, that was probably a variance.
Yeah, let's, let's let Ms. Hold, if you could address, for instance, mechanical equipment?
Absolutely, happy to. The graphic on page 39 within the guidelines, and the, the one that I took that snippet and showed you in the PowerPoint shows that location K, which is for your HVAC equipment behind the principal structure, it's prohibited in the side yard to prevent just this discussion. And this entire graphic here is, the applicant is meant to show us how their house type will fit on their lot types and to show us that these standards can be met in each and every block so that we don't have an Oak Park or a Hamlet situation again.
And I do want to go back because one of the, the build envelope requirements, Oak Park is a beautiful neighborhood, right? We all agree, you know, the housing type is nice, it went through the proper channels. But what they didn't anticipate is that everybody chose the largest home on the, on the smallest lot. And so they expected a variety, and therefore they expected kind of the, the shrinking and widening of open space. But economies of scale, why not upgrade and get the larger house on this lot? And so that's what put them in the circumstance of, oh, okay, well, nobody can have patios. My neighbor got the variance to put a patio or didn't ask permission to put a patio, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, again.
That, that, and a failure of communication, which.
Yes.
Which is.
Not everybody feels that's tight enough. I read that too, and I, it, it, it kind of satisfied me if, if we got to see the plan.
Yep.
Now, there's a problem with additions. We have one right on 745 where, where the lot was so tight and they went, that, that, we gave an easement to go into the, into the, uh, uh, common property with their, with their addition because it was so tight. And so then the next neighbor comes in and say, whoa, you know, and so that, that, I think we, if we make that tight enough that you have to see the plan, you can't vary from that plan, but the next second or third owner, you know, there.
So back to that, we were at, we were at 153, 134A, on the trees, sub item D. The only concern that I had is can you help me understand? Obviously, we want variety, we want the different neighborhoods to be able to embrace characteristics, different trees, that sort of thing. I, I've seen, you know, Mr. Way, I trust his design property. I've seen some people who have some incredibly eclectic ideas of what landscaping should look like. What process do those follow for internal city? You know, we see landscape plans occasionally. What happens on the staff side for landscape plans when we're looking at PUD type application? And I apologize for not answering, asking this in question.
No, that's, that's fine. Actually, this is where, in my, in my opinion, it, it gets interesting. We have a couple of landscape architects within the planning department. I'm one of them, Jenny Roush is another of them. We have a lot of folks with good urban design skills, like Chris Will. We also consult with Dan Philibom, who is a registered landscape architect. And we have recently hired, as a zoning inspector, a landscape expert who has a lot of great ideas about tree placement, tree variety. This is something we take very, very seriously, and we give it very careful consideration. And with the language that we are suggesting here, the, the goal was to kind of spark somebody's thought process that we're calling out areas to emphasize neighborhood individuality, highlight intersections and pedestrian facilities, and complement the size and massing of the surrounding architecture. So those are clues. So those are clues as to what kind of landscaping we are expecting to see without having to say, you must do it this way, because there's 100 different acceptable solutions, and we want creativity.
Yeah, so I, I guess my, my question better refined is, occasionally, we have applications where at the very back it says a list of all the trees and how many count and everything.
Right.
That's not the only, um, we are not the only body who's looking at that and approving that. What process does that go through for acceptable species, placement, variety, et cetera, either prior to coming to us or after coming to us?
It is, yeah.
Specifically around PUDs.
Okay, so it would be our standard review process where we send it out to, um, divisions within the city, like forestry, zoning inspection. We look at it internally as a staff. It isn't one person's point of view. We collect everybody's comments, and then we take that back to the applicant and say, here's what we think you need to do, and then we make the recommendation to you.
With that process explained, I'm completely comfortable with the language. Is there any other discussion? I apologize for belaboring the trees. Mr. Suplak.
This is, this might be a question for Mr. Way. Like, as we are sitting here speaking and as we're sitting here unpacking, we've done this a couple of times now, right? Um, I, I guess I'm going to, is there merit to a standard at least about, I'm going to height, right? And if we're talking the street trees, and of course, you get, you get a series of, you know, my street is, my street is, uh, honey locust all the way down, right?
Mine too.
But good, bad, or different, it's now being supplemented in with sugar maples, which will grow to a scale, a scale that's commensurate with, right? So then you'll have a real column of trees. But I've also been on streets, not necessarily in Dublin, where they stick in a crabapple in the middle of that, and it gets to, you know, 15 feet high total, and all of a sudden you got this, it, it, it never matures and it, and suddenly the, the ambiance of it is, um, is discounted in the process. So it's not, not less, not so much a commentary or a question about species, right? The species can vary down the street. Is there, is there merit to some commentary about, um, commensurate kind of heightened scale at maturity? I'm asking, I'm not advocating.
Or if I could amend that and make it a two-part question, is that already part of the, uh, the consideration criteria?
Yeah.
When we're going through the process you just explained?
So what you're experiencing is replacing trees, right? The city's doing, and they're not doing it necessarily with a plan. We're talking about a PUD and coming up with a design that's compatible with an entire development, right? And I think, as Sarah said, that you can vary trees along a street, like at intersections, maybe you put flowering trees there to accentuate the intersection, and then you have street trees, tall trees lining other parts of it. I think as long as there's a plan, an idea, a concept of how, what kind of trees you want and what kind of effect you want.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's fine to vary it. I don't think you have to have the avenue of trees from point A to point B, which was the traditional.
And would we, as Dublin, would we prefer to say, we want the tall, mature trees, right? Agreed with you, but I'm, I'm asking, I'm not advocating, we're just, we're just unpacking this.
Yeah, I, I, again, I think it's, there's an aesthetic there that, that you have, that a PUD is coming to you and it's been designed as one thing.
Mm-hmm.
And there should be a concept behind how they're treating the landscape, how they're landscaping streets and all that, so.
For example, if you, your section of the PUD, that's all your two-story, you know, with, you know, your overhang into the garage, so everything's tall and that all has the little arbor bidet, narrow, shorter, and then your townhouse houses or your collected houses, your attached homes all have these massive, you wouldn't necessarily get the aesthetic that I think.
Duly noted. I mean, my, I, I guess I'm, I'm going to, I'm, I'm worried the city could potentially be suddenly awash in trees that never mature to a feeling, a perception of maturity, right? And of course, part of us sitting around and saying, we like our trails, we like our trees, is we like mature trees at scale.
Yeah, so if I could then direct back, the process that you currently have with that extra division, are those considerations, the mature height, the, are those considerations currently in the process?
I believe that they are, yes.
So does that kind of mitigate the concern?
I'll accept that.
Okay. All right. Uh, continuing down, again, a couple of references back to, hey, look at the neighborhood design guidelines, and then we are done with that particular document. Are there any other questions or discussion items for the draft code amendment language as we've gone through it?
One last, and forgive me, Sarah, this might be a question as much as, um, less a comment. You have incorporated language, and I'm going back to, I don't know, page 41, relative to the alternate block arrangements. You have, per our conversation previously, you incorporated language that should, uh, residential community front onto sort of a open space, public open space. There's some commentary here about, we were concerned about getting too far from basically a public access way, in which case the front door just becomes the back door and the, right? Like, it just turns it all on its ear. And this is much to, much to Warren's sort of commentary, commentary, is this, and maybe it's a question for all of us, is this toothy enough as it's written, right? Um, the distance from where blocks of dwelling units are arranged to front onto a public open space with the garages located at the back of the lot, the distance from the front door to the public street must be carefully considered to maintain a sense of connectedness to the public realm and the surrounding community of neighborhood, neighbors. Are we satisfied with it collectively?
I had the same question about whether we should be more specific, but I think, right, trying to be more specific, I think we can get there with that language. It's, it's flagging that we don't want, you know, houses two blocks back from the street and say that those are really linked to the street, right?
Yeah, for specificity, I would look at Mr. Schneer. So can you look at that and see if you are comfortable with its specificity, understanding what the, the vision of the commission is?
Yeah, when I read it, I was, it's open, I mean, they got, there is common way with this, that there is inherent subjectivity, you know, in this. So, uh, I think it strikes the right balance, but if somebody wants to wordsmith it.
And, and again, remember, this is the guiding document for them to write their code to bring to us to, for us to approve.
I guess I'd be bothered if this were the code language.
What's that?
I just, I would be bothered if this were the code language instead of the guideline.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But since it's the guideline.
Yeah, and my, my only concern was obviously, obviously you work towards a solution, thank you, right? Sense of connectedness to the public realm, and again, future proofing this past this commission, these, these board members, we did have robust conversation on this point in particular, so we have that context. But is it doing, doing the heavy lifting it needs to?
But, but right now, there isn't any language to, to guide that.
And I do, I fall into that trap very frequently. So good, better, best, just because it's better than what we have doesn't mean that it's necessarily what we want to forward. So I, I think it's still okay.
Yeah, I think it's the balance, right? You can be very specific. It can't be further than 200 feet back from the road.
Correct.
Or you have some flexibility knowing that that's the issue is we don't want those houses disconnected from that public street.
Yes.
Do the graphics on page 42 help with that scale and connectedness? That, that was certainly the intent, and, and if you have some suggestions about those, we're happy to hear them.
That would be more applicable in, in subdivision, like on 745, around 745, there's a 200-foot setback. They got to be at least 200 off, off, in some areas. Now, north, I think it's 100, they cut it lower to 100, but you've still got to follow that, and then, so, yeah. Most likely, developers are going to get as close to them, running the plumbing and all that stuff.
So I'm comfortable.
Yeah, I am too.
I'm seeing at least four head nods.
If it's ridiculous, we'll, we'll.
All right. Any other discussion on 22-177 ADM? All right.
Perfection is the enemy of good.
True, true. All right, I will entertain a motion then to recommend approval to City Council for the new neighborhood design guidelines.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Suplak. Thank you, Mr. Suplak. Thank you, Mr. Way. Ms. Beal.
Mr. Suplak.
Yes.
Mr. Way.
Yes.
Ms. Harder.
Yes.
Mr. Fishman.
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Mr. Schneer.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. All right. That's round talk day.
And Madam Chair, if I might.
Yes.
Suggest, I have, um, provided a condition to rewrite number seven, having to do with the easements and open space. That's for your consideration. It is worded in the same way that the stormwater language was worded.
That, that was my recommendation, based on future discussion. Mr. Schneer said essentially he was comfortable. I think it was me being mostly pedantic, but, uh, looking back to the commission, if the commission is acceptable with the motion as we made it, which reflects what was included in our packet prior to the amendment?
We've only, to be clear, we've only approved the guidelines, correct? So we still have a vote forthcoming.
So the next one is the code amendment?
Right, which, which, at which time we can accept this.
That's what Sarah was saying, this is the change from what we present.
So I, I am not married to either one. Mr. Schneer, really, I, I would look to you.
Yep. Yes.
I think that's a better, it, there's conformity in the language that way.
All right, so, uh, then looking, reviewing that, the zoning code. All right. Uh, so making sure that I am following properly, we have case number two, 22, 23-002 ADM-C. Do you have a separate presentation on this one? We're essentially doing these.
No, these were presented together because they are so inextricably linked, um, but they are separate projects, separate cases.
Understood, understood. I just wanted to make sure that I, now I'll read that in, but since we've already discussed, then we will handle the motion separately.
Yes.
All right. Um, for those of you following along with my scatterbrainness this evening, uh, case two, Neighborhood Design Standards 23-002 ADM-C Administrative Request Code Amendment. This application is a request for review and recommendation to City Council for code amendments for residential planned unit developments. And as Ms. Holt just, um, just described, we did essentially see these together. Uh, looking to the commission, if there are any questions, and then because I was somewhat out of order, if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak on case number two, going, going, no comments from online. Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Before we do that, um, Mr. Boggs, I'm, I did not search through the code. Do we use the word per anywhere in the code instead of pursuant to, to your knowledge? Or should we? I said, I signed off on this, then that sort of bothered me. If you're not bothered, I'm not.
There is at least one place where it is used, just in a quick Ctrl+F.
Yeah.
Search there.
I would suggest we say, what we just add, pursuant to. Sounds classier.
All right. So Mr. Schneer, I will entertain a motion with that. Do you want to, um, include a condition? Would you like to make a motion?
Well, let's see. I would move to modify the proposed language to change the word per to pursuant.
We want to entertain the motion to approve with the language change, so motion to approve the.
The code modifications with that additional modification.
Okay. Um, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Any clarification needed for the language change?
I believe, isn't the language change just to amend the condition in the current motion, just this use of the word per?
Yeah.
Right? So it's not all use of the word per, because if it was.
Just, I'm sorry, to take up more time than, but i- i- in one, just, in, in fact, if we, if you change one to pursuant, then we don't, then we just approve it with that, that change, so in your slide. Yeah, eliminate number two and then number one, change the word per to pursuant, and then we can.
I just don't see a per.
That's per the.
Oh, per the N D G. Okay. I read that like six times.
In number one.
In number one.
Okay.
In number one.
Yes.
Then eliminate number two.
Yes.
Eliminate number two.
The one condition.
We can approve it with the condition, with that condition.
Mr. Boggs, that was a little clunky. We have a motion, we have a second.
Rules are getting in our way.
We had the additional discussion. Are we ready to vote, given the clarification? Or do we need to?
And I.
Rewind.
Yeah, should I, uh, take the motion off the table and make, and?
But we have a motion in a second, so.
Mr. Schneer made the motion to amend the motion that was on the floor. So vote on that motion, that will get this pursuant to language in, and then you vote on the motion to adopt.
We didn't have a motion on the floor when he made the motion to approve. They were essentially a motion to approve with the language change. We didn't have an open motion when he made that motion.
Well, then, it would just be a vote on the.
Okay.
Question. It would be a vote to make the recommendation.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Beal.
Ms. Harder.
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Mr. Suplak.
Yes.
Faye.
Yes.
Mr. Fishman.
Yes.
Mr. Schneer.
Yes.
I feel like it's aggressively turning off this evening. Thank you, Ms. Beal. Um, and with that, uh, thank you, everyone. I know that those are not necessarily the most fun to listen to. I appreciate your patience. Uh, we will move on to discussion item. This is architectural building materials. This is an introduction with Mark Ford. Welcome. Ford and Associates Regarding Architectural and Building Material Consulting. So, Mr. Will, I'll turn the time over to you for case, uh, the case presentation.
Thank you, and good evening. No presentation, but just a short discussion. Um, as the commission may recall, previous discussions with the commission and City Council in this past year have identified a need to provide additional architectural resources and support, um, for design and things like building materials. Uh, most recently, this was discussed at the joint work session back in August. Uh, planning already provides a similar resource to the Architectural Review Board. To help fulfill this need here, uh, planning has contracted with Ford and Associates Architects to provide on-call professional architectural services, um, for the city's boards and commissions, as well as provide additional, um, and supplemental review for planning staff. Potential efforts, we expect support from the consultant, might include assessment of new building materials and standards, um, best practices, supplemental review of architecture and elevation plans, um, that we've received with development applications, um, and reviewing existing conditions pertinent to cases as they're relevant to architecture. Uh, Mr. Ford, who is here with us this evening, established the Columbus-based firm in 1993. Uh, the firm has nearly 30 years of experience, including past consultant work for the city here in Dublin. Um, little thunder. Tonight, staff asked the commission to provide feedback for staff, both staff and the consultant, on topics which the commission considers most beneficial, um, and approaches of, approaches of how the commission, um, can best absorb information, uh, that staff and the consultant share with you regarding architecture. Um, and then with that, I will ask the commission if you would like to invite Mr. Ford up to share a little bit about himself and his firm.
Certainly, certainly. Well, welcome. Uh, we'd like to invite you up to the microphone. If you could press the button and wait for the green light, that way we keep Ms. Beal happy. Perfect. Welcome.
Well, thank you. Well, thank you.
Certainly, so we'd like to give you an opportunity, you know, Mr. Will introduced you, but we'd like to say welcome, and, and ask if you'd like to share anything with the commission, understanding, you know, our intricacies and looking at opportunities for the city of Dublin.
Sure, well, thank you, the thunder is a little ominous beginning here for, thunderous applause, I think was what I heard there. No, my name's Mark Ford, Ford and Associates Architects, started my own practice in 93, located down Grand View, and have presented before this board, Mr. Fishman numerous times, primarily commercial projects, Avery Road, the Corver Center there, the Corver Center, Harden Cell Mills, one of our projects, other state, state bank on 161, that small little project, that was the one that was the first one through the Bridge Street corridor, so we, you know, we worked through that, so have experience with the board, have also worked with staff in terms of providing resources to them on research of some new materials that were being presented, you know, on different cases, and actually working on something right now, that request that came in last week already, for some new materials and doing some research on that, and then a recommendation on the, on the, what I, what I learned about it, so.
Thank you very much. Now, if I recall correctly, based on our briefing earlier, everyone on this board, maybe Ms. Harder know the Heartland Bank, when we were considering the Heartland Bank with the Nietzsche Ha type material and everything, Mr. Ford, you were consulted on that material, were you not?
I was, yeah.
So we are certainly looking forward to having your expertise available to this commission, I think together we'll make a better product for the city of Dublin, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I look forward to it, I always like learning new things, and just based on the level of questions I heard in the previous presentation, I know that you'll definitely be challenging me with some of my conclusions as well, so I, I look forward to it.
Well, thank you, and welcome to the team.
Oh, thank you.
Last chance to run.
All right, well, that is our last official agenda item for this evening, we do have opportunity, of course, for our normal, any communications from staff.
I have some, Ms. Call, and I wanted to point out to you, in your packet, you have a memo from Zach Hounshell on some future code amendments, as if this first batch weren't enough fun, we're gonna take on some more here, and we wanted to introduce this to you, back in February of 2022, the BZA heard an administrative appeal about an encroachment of a pergola into a setback, and staff was of the opinion to not allow the encroachment, hence the administrative appeal. The board upheld staff's opinion to not allow the encroachment, but in that upholding, recommended and directed staff to define open and uncovered pergolas, patios, and all kinds of related items. So you will be seeing some code amendments coming forth very soon, and we wanted to just introduce this to you and see if there's any initial thoughts or questions or direction that I could take back to Zach and the rest of staff.
I have one minor one, just because it's fresh on our minds, solar. So we talked a lot about solar and what that looks like, and so if this particular portion of code is not where solar ought to be addressed, if it is a covering or mounted, a redirection to the appropriate portion of code, or addressing if it is proper in this placement, to address it properly, again, back to the, we use the silly, and you may be entertained by this, we use the silly example of if future energy-efficient material like a solar brick is introduced to the market, do we want to treat that as a solar product or a brick product? And if it's fundamentally functioning as that building material, in this case a brick, then we would treat it with that portion of the code. If it's fundamentally mounted to or not a building material, then it would be treated as a solar accessory. So, again, if we could just keep that in mind as we're writing.
I will take that back, yes.
Mr. Schneer?
When I read the memo, a thought came to mind, and I think it would be very helpful to have sketches or pictures representing just the different elements of this, those which could be approved, those which couldn't be approved, but it just sort of called out for some, and it could be very informal, I mean, nothing other than in your deck or something would be all that I think would be necessary.
Good idea.
Mr. Suplack?
I think there's, relative to the sketches, I sat here and started sketching scenarios by which, right, I could potentially interpret even the language that we have here, and it immediately goes to, does my pergola have posts going down to foundation on that side, or am I cantilevered out there? Right, so I, I think there's, again, to the commentary of the sketches, I think we'll have to be really refined here, I think we are articulating we allow said encroachment for a patio, but then that also begs, we've all seen the patios that have a sitting wall, a knee-high wall wrapped around them, is that, or are we just talking built, you know, above floor grade? Those, all those things, I think, are gonna really start to become important nuance relative to this question.
Yes, thank you.
I know, it really is too bad, we don't like details. Mr. Way.
So I have a basic question, why do we let porches and patios encroach by five feet? But, I mean, is that just, that's in the code already?
Yeah, so, if I could, if, when he prepares that, if he brings some of the history behind anything that we've allowed encroaching along these lines, I think that will at least foster the discussion, whether we agree that it ought to stay that way or not.
Yeah, so that, again, that, I don't know how that came about, but we're allowing one encroachment, but not another, that just seems to be, there's something, but the other, the other thing that I was thinking is that porches and patios tend to be very horizontal, very ground-based, whereas the other things are architectural, so maybe them, those items matching the house and not going beyond the walls of a, makes a lot, could make some sense, but I'm still struggling with the, the other encroachment.
I just had a few thoughts about, I think we brought some good, good points about some of the wordage can really entwine, and you may be talking about one thing, and really the same definition fits, fits another, so it's very close to that. And then I was also thinking about, like, once you put like a pergola or something out there, you might add some amenities, like a fan, or you might be putting your hot tub or some things of that sort in that area, and because of that, you might be, we might need to talk about noise, or that being a distraction from another neighbor, or something of that sort that they're seeing because of the height of, and in your mind, it's just a decoration that goes with it in that, in that part there too, so, thank you.
Yeah, I think the detail surrounding, you know, Ms. Harder brings up a good thing, good idea with TV, if we allow the patio, we could mount a TV, we could run some conduit out there and, and mount a TV, if it's adjacent to a trail, are we okay with that? If it's in a private backyard with a 100-foot setback, are we okay with that, 20 foot, those kinds of things? So if we can bring the history of why we allowed the encroachment, what the purpose of that was, then I think that we'll be better set up to talk about the above grade.
I was also thinking about the HOAs, and are we putting them in a bad position because maybe their homeowner or association has something that says no to that, which is fine, that's their right, but if we're just, just moving things down the road to them, is this one of those items?
And, Mr. Boggs, I would look to you, that's a little dicey when it comes to city, essentially, essentially the city does not delegate necessarily to HOAs, so if you could speak to that.
Ultimately, it is up to the HOA to enforce their own restrictions, whatever they may be. I think that in, at least in, in the kernel of inspiration that is leading to this particular code revision, is to clarify this ambiguity, or at least arguable ambiguity over open and uncovered versus what is a pergola, et cetera. The, the city ultimately has to decide for itself what it wants its standards to be, and if HOAs want to make them more restrictive, then it is incumbent upon them to enforce them.
Thank you, Mr. Boggs. All right, any other items for communications this evening?
I believe that Chris is gonna talk about the community plan and where we're, where we are with that and some scheduling.
This one's fun.
Yes, very excited, staff is excited to share that the city will be, or is kicking off the update to the community plan. As the commission may recall, it was first published back in 2007, so an amount has changed, we're very excited about this. Planning is contracted with Household Levine Associates, a Chicago-based planning and design firm. The project or the planning process is expected to take about 18 months. The city will be hosting the consultant team in March for a three-day kickoff event, likely the last week of March, 27th through the 30th, so we'd like to ask the commission's availability, more information will be forthcoming, but if you could share your availability that, that week, again, March 27th to the 30th, or 29th. We're hoping to get far enough in advance of folks' schedules. I think Dublin Spring Break is the week before that, so we're hoping everybody's back from
Thursday, it would be nice to, I mean, that's a, March is a five-week Thursday. It's the week before.
So generally, that week looks pretty okay?
Okay.
Good. Perfect, that's all, thank you.
All right. Any upcoming events for the city of Dublin that we need to just be aware of? Okay, well, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for spending a Thursday night with us and meeting adjourned. And Mr. Way's gonna knock the cab.